Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 10th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is visitors' comments for items not on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak?
Yes.
Come on forward. I just ask that you give your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
My name is, uh, my name is Starle Moroska. Our address, I'm here with my wife Wendy, our address is 91 Beach Street. We live on Lake Thompson. We just purchased our house on, uh, March 18th of this year and we're, we were very, very excited about coming here and moving to Palmer. We looked around at a bunch of different areas in New York. Uh, we're from New York and we're in the process of moving up here full-time. I've recently retired from teaching for 20 years and my wife is a midwife and she's a little bit younger than me, so she's going a little bit slower in terms of her retirement. But, um, we bought a little house on the lake, on Lake Thompson, because we loved it and we just had a really, uh, what I felt was a disturbing experience and I, I haven't gotten any satisfaction regarding, uh, what happened. We, um, our roof was in terrible disrepair when we bought the house, so much so that it had to be tarped, uh, through the course of the winter because it was in such bad shape and, um, and the first thing that we did was, uh, get a new roof and, um, the second day that we were working on the roof, we, we thought everything was going all right and everything and, uh, the building inspector came and, uh, shut down our roof being done because we had outstanding taxes, which we had no idea we had outstanding taxes. We had no idea we had outstanding sewer issues. When we signed for our house, um, on March 18th, our attorney told us that we wouldn't receive any bills, town or state for at least 60 to 90 days because that was the process with the state or in the town and it took a while. But anyway, uh, when we found out we had these outstanding bills, we immediately, uh, paid them within an hour of the building inspector coming out and shutting it down. We had, um, paid the bills in full and, uh, it was the second day that they were doing the roof, they were, uh, 45 minutes away from being done, uh, with the roof and, um, so he finished the roof because the next day there was going to be a massive, massive storm here, uh, and he was concerned that the roof was, was going to suffer damage because it wasn't finished. He also didn't have a tarp that he, with him that he could put on it. And we were contacted, uh, at the end of the day by, uh, the building department and told that we would be given a $300 violation because we didn't have, uh, the proper paperwork. Uh, it just seemed to be a, a series of misunderstandings that just, uh, culminated in something, um, ugly. So, um, the, um, he finished the roof that day. We got the $300 violation. We thought that was it. Uh, two days later, I got a knock on my door, a very loud knock from that gentleman there. Um, and, um, I thought it was hammering. It was so loud. I, I thought somebody was working on a house around the area and when I opened the door, um, he asked me if I was the owner of the house. I told him I was, um, and he just started yelling at me. When did you finish this roof? When did you finish this roof? When did you? And I was just like, I, who are you? I have no idea who you are. Uh, he was wearing a crest from the Charlton Building Inspector. He had a hat on with the Palmer Building Inspector. It was all very confusing. It was like, I don't know who you are. But the, the issue for me and, and the thing, well, there, I have several issues, but the thing that was most upsetting to me was not only that this man was raising his voice to me on my property in my home, a 62-year-old lady alone fixing up her house, but he said something to me which I found deeply disturbing and I hope that it's not a reflection of who the town of Palmer is. He said, he said at one point, I, because he was yelling at me and yelling at me and yelling at me, I was like, I don't understand what the big deal is. And he said, well, you're from New York, you might not understand how things work up here. And I'm born and raised in New England. I've lived the vast majority of my life in New York, but as my life is on the wane, as they say, I've come back to New England. I'm not an other. I'm not a stranger. I'm not somebody who doesn't belong up here. We're people who purposely picked this town because we thought it was a really wonderful town and we wanted to be here and we want to be a part of the community. We want to be a part of the Lake Association. We want to volunteer. We had checked out volunteer things that we could do for the town. We want to be a part of it and to be made, to be treated like an other, it just didn't set right with me. And at the end of the day, we received a $1,700 violation in addition to the violation that we had received. $2,000 worth of violations for what were misunderstandings. Now, I can understand that $300 violation and both my roofer and I were happy to pay it. It was like, uh, it's just a mess, easier to pay it, but this felt like retribution. This felt personal and I don't understand why it would be personal. We're here two months. So, I spoke to Brad Brothers about this. I, I didn't feel like he took me seriously at all. I felt like the conversation that I had with him about this was, he looked at it as a he said, she said, and he believed him. But this happened. I don't think it, it's okay that it happened and we're, we just want to feel welcomed here. We just want to feel a part of this community. We've chosen this place. We've put our life savings into being in Palmer, Massachusetts and I don't think it's too much to ask in return to be treated with respect, regard, and $2,000 worth of violations means that that roofer who did me a favor by finishing that roof so that this storm that was going to come in didn't wreck this $25,000 roof I just put on now has made not a dime on that job. And, you know, one of the things Mr. Brothers said to me was, you know, I don't know why you're upset about it. He has to pay the fine. I'm upset about it because he did that for me and somebody getting mistreated while they're doing something to be kind to me doesn't feel right. So, I wanted to come here. I wanted to express that. I wanted you folks to understand that we've come here in good faith and we hope to be treated with good faith in return. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am? The, the $300 first fine was because you had back taxes or something?
Yeah, well, we didn't know we had back taxes, but, right. We had back taxes and we hadn't paid the sewer bill. But again, we had not received either of those bills, so we didn't know that.
So you came in and paid them?
Uh, yeah, we paid them within an hour of being-
And then the following day, so the, the fine, the $1,700 fine was because you didn't, you obviously had to have had a permit, correct?
Yes, he thought he had a permit. That's another thing, that, uh, the building department said they revoked the permit on April 11th, but the check for the permit had been cashed on the 24th. The roofer in good faith-
They cashed your check-
Yeah.
And also revoked-
That's correct.
-the permit supposedly.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know, man. I'm just getting one side right now. I obviously have to hear the other side.
Absolutely.
But, wow.
I just think it's an egregious fine and I just think it's unfair to somebody who was trying to help me out. That guy could have walked away, could have said, hey lady, you got trouble? I don't need that trouble.
You came in and paid your taxes within an hour.
That is correct.
All right, I mean, yeah, I don't know. I've not heard nothing good so far about this building inspector, but that's just me and I would love to hear his side.
I think we have to be careful about commenting on personnel issues.
Yeah, so I, I would just say, um, we're kind of crossing the line of a potential personnel issue, which we can't do publicly, so, um-
That's fine. Just wanted to tell you folks my story.
Yep, appreciate it.
Just wanted-
And, um, you know, I just wanted to-
Because we're going to be here.
Yep.
And I, you know, I- And we're going to be here, I hope, for a long time.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that, um, your first taste of Palmer was not a pleasant one. Welcome to the community. We are, it is a, it is a great town and I think you will really enjoy living here. We'll have to get a little bit more information, which we are not able to do publicly, okay? Just so you can understand that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I, I've written this out and I have the violations here if you would like that.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, you can give it to me.
I can give it to a secretary, give it to you?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I pulled the permit today and had to pay a lot of back taxes too.
Well, you know, when you've only owned a house for, uh, at the time, it was six weeks, you don't think you owe back taxes.
I know, I understand.
So, you know, but, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're people who pay our bills. That, it wasn't an issue of us trying to skirt anything. We just didn't know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
First of all, I sympathize with you ladies.
We're, no.
Palmer has had a history of problems with building inspectors.
We're not going to go, we're not going back and forth. Okay.
Okay, that's all I'm going to say. Now, last meeting at the end, you mentioned something about raising sewer fees. Did you say something about the sewer department and the fees?
Sewer fees will be going up.
They will be going up?
Be part of the bu-
Again?
It'll be part of the budget discussion a little further down in our meeting.
Hey?
Yep.
Okay, because I didn't see that on the agenda.
Um, fiscal '25 budget. It'll be part of that discussion.
Okay. So it'll be open to the public this-
We're having a public hearing on the budget, yep. So if you want to just hold that thought until we get to that, that would be great.
Okay. My next question, uh, this, I love some paper. Folks, there on that cottage project on, uh, Forest Lake. Uh, I attended a meeting, I had listened to some, uh, discussion on, uh, the town doesn't want to spend any money on sewer, or helping the village, uh, not sewer water, not helping the villages of Thorne dyke or Bonzo with, uh, water up the Forest Lake. Is that, uh-
The town, the council has not taken any vote to that, on that matter yet. There will be a meeting later in the month of June with the developer of that site and we'll have more information after that meeting. Mr. Brothers will be meeting with them.
It seems to me that, uh, the way the discussion was going, that there's no way that Thorne dyke or Bonzo can fund that project by themselves without some type of help. Now, the town, if this project goes through, the town will be getting tax revenue from that project, correct?
Yep.
And, uh, also there's talk that there might be, uh, some condos going up on the corner of Emery and State Street. That farm has been sold and it seems that, uh, the town, seeing they're going to get revenue out of this, that they would in some way help the two water departments fund this in a way that down the road, maybe the, or the, the water departments could reimburse the town for what they put in towards that project and, uh, by the, uh, by the revenue they get from the water.
I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed and like I said, Mr. Brothers is going to be meeting with the, with the developer and some other individuals later in the month of June and I believe after that, information will flow back to the, to the council as to different alternatives on that project.
All right.
So, as of right now, the, the, uh, the conversations that were had, were had with the prior town manager. Mr. Brothers needs to get up to speed on that project and that will be happening in the coming weeks.
Okay, will he be meeting with the water districts?
Eventually, yeah. All the players will be part of that conversation, but again, he's been here two months.
I realize that, but this has been dragging on and nobody seems to want to, uh-
You know, the past is the past and we're in the present and we're going to move forward. That's all I can say.
The past is the past, huh? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Minutes, minutes from December 11th of 2023. Everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yeah, I have no comments.
What? Fine.
Yeah, we're fine with them.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some old token.
Motion by Phil, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention, yes. Is the meeting minutes of May 13th? Any comments on those? Seeing none, is, do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Phil.
Yep.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no old business. Does anybody have any old business? Okay. So, uh, 6:30, we have a public hearing regarding the streets and sidewalk ordinance. Open the public hearing at 6:48. Um, Brad, did you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, the only changes that were made were, um, at the request of the council to remove the fines from the actual ordinance and we will vote on them separately at a later date. Um, it won't stop this from going forward, but the changes were made on it.
Any comments from the council? This is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance. Is my voice projecting back there?
No.
It is?
No, it is.
Oh, okay. Uh, so this is a public hearing regarding an ordinance for streets and sidewalks. Um, it has to do with, uh, snow, debris, water and sediment on walks, ways and sidewalks. This is a public hearing regarding that ordinance. If there's any questions from the public, I'll take them at this point in time.
Can you explain what it is, however?
Yep.
Is it a ordinance?
Yep.
I'm all confused.
Yep. Um, did you want to talk, did you want to or Matt?
Matthew Morse, yeah. Do you want to come up and just give a quick overview again?
So the, uh, it would be kind of, so the, uh, streets and sidewalks ordinance that was, uh-
Who you are, because they probably don't all know you.
No, you're good.
Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Say who you are.
Matthew Morse, Director of Public Works for the town of Palmer. Uh, this ordinance is to, uh, tackle a few concerns that we have throughout town. Uh, snow on the sidewalks, we have sediment, uh, and dirt and things like that washing off of privately-owned properties covering into our streets, into our sidewalks. Also comes with that stormwater runoff, um, that ice dams up the side of our roads, making it difficult to maintain in the wintertime. Uh, what else do we have? So, it, it covers a lot of different aspects of trying to keep, uh, homeowners blowing off leaves into the, into the public way, into the sidewalks. Uh, there was a few concerns last fall of homeowners blowing leaves into their sidewalk where the kids walk to school, uh, so that unsafe walk to school, so we have to make sure we, we keep those clean for the kids. Plowing snow, you really shouldn't be, uh, plowing snow out of your property into the public way, uh, safety concerns. And then stormwater runoff is kind of a big one. You have some hills and you got some residents that are discharging their stormwater out into the public way and during the wintertime, it freezes up. It's ruining our roads. It's making, uh, safety concerns, uh, costing the town a lot of money for overtime and ice, uh, treatment in the winter with salting and what have you standing. Um, so, yeah, there's a lot of concerns, I think, that this covers.
And again, just a reminder for the council, the goal of this is to, um, get compliance. It's not to fine. The fines are there for repeat offenders, but the first is just a, uh, kind of a verbal warning, um, with public education on, you know, to, uh, be kind of a better neighbor.
Yeah, we did add to, uh, as well as adding the, uh, the fines on a different section, we also added that the first order of business is going to be like a warning, a verbal warning, sort of like a public education. Uh, so it just gives us a little bit of, of something to be able to knock on the resident's door, have a conversation with them and see if we can get them to comply. I don't think we're really setting up to like give fines or anything. We're just trying to correct safety, uh, public safety concerns throughout the town.
Matt?
Uh, one thing about Breckenridge-
How will they know about it?
So right now, there's already, so like snow removal is already an ordinance, so we are amending and adding to it. Um, it needs to be published once we, um, once we vote it, it'll be published, a synopsis of it in the journal. Uh, and then I believe, are all the ordinances online?
Yes, e-code.
They're all online too. So it'll be updated online. Yep.
Just so John Q. Public knows what to do because it gets very frustrating out of the downtown Palmer when lots aren't shut and people have to walk to the road to walk because homeowners don't shovel their locks. And you're off called a few times and-
So that gives you, uh, 24 hours from the end of this whole thing.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, the snow is no different.
It's not, of course.
Right, so the, there's going to be an attempt to have a, as, as they just said, um, to make people aware and so it's not necessarily to just put something in place and, and immediately fine people, but it's going to come to the point where people that are repeat offenders are going to have to be at some point, um, fined. So, yes, we, we are aware that, that it is an issue.
And Matt, can you speak a little bit about Breckenridge Street? They're telling me there's water running off down-
Yeah, so actually, actually, yes. So right around the 150 mark, actually, just this week, so all winter long, we were chasing this runoff on Breckenridge. Uh, ice dams were building up massively. We're scraping them with a loader, we're treating them, we're, and in the wintertime, it gets a little difficult to find out where water's coming from because thaw and refreeze and all those kinds of things, but actually turns out, last week, midweek, uh, I had a quick meeting with the Palmer Water District and it's-
They got a leaky pipe, don't they?
Turns out that they have a water leak at about the 150-
It's been going on forever. It's like, it's not just runoff water coming from that guy. I meant to text you guys this last week because I like, this is too constant. Somebody's got a water leak.
Yes, so they, they identified the leak. It's right about the 150 mark. They're actually going to abandon that pipe. They're going to run a new line in. Um, you know, it took a while, I guess, for them to find it, um, but good news is, they found it this winter. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have it again. I know we got some damage we have to repair. There's some curvings and stuff like that that we had to scrape, so we'll go and get in some repairs.
Wow.
Thank you.
Ruth, but you need to come up because they can't hear you from home.
Oh, really?
Yep.
I don't have a microphone.
No.
I've got a question for Mr. Morse.
Yeah, but can you come up and ask it? Thanks.
Sure. My name is Ruth Curtin. I live on River Street in Thorne dyke and my question for Mr. Morse is about a sidewalk. I live at 111 and between 111 and Gate Street, there are ver- several uneven, uh, portions of concrete and I called your office and I made them aware of that and I've fallen and I don't want to fall again. So I was wondering if that's something that your office could address.
Uh, yeah. Can you hear me? Yes, actually, we did get your call.
Okay, good.
I believe that there was also a dumping in front of your property at the same time.
Dumping.
So we cleaned up while somebody dumped a whole bunch of bicycle and, uh, anyway.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so we cleaned up, yeah, we cleaned up the dumping in front of your house and actually our operations manager assessed your sidewalk and we've got it on a list to see where it's going to fall in our repairs.
Good, thank you.
Uh, two weeks ago, we just actually just got our sidewalk assessment plan came in. So we're going to be addressing some of those areas this summer.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing at 6:56. Okay. And now, we have the second reading of this, of Streets and Sidewalk Ordinance. Can you just, again, give a synopsis? Yep. Not the whole thing.
Be it moved that the council amends the code of the town of Palmer, Chapter 122, Streets and Sidewalks by replacing Article 3, Snow Removal in its entirety from the following amended Article 3. We just kind of briefly went over that. Article 3 covers snow, debris, water and sediment on ways and sidewalks. No person other than employee of the town of Palmer contractor working on behalf of the town, in the performance of their appointed work shall direct, discharge, dump, shovel, pile, push, et cetera, uh, or discharge water into, onto or across any public way, including sidewalks, uh, or public property. Uh, sediment in, on or across public way or sidewalks, the owner or person having the care of real, uh, property shall cause the cleanup and removal within 24 hours of that deposit. Uh, snow removal as well, within, needs to be removed therefrom, uh, within 24 hours from the end of any snowfall. Uh, and then there's a subsection around, uh, violations and penalties to be enforced by the Palmer Police Department. Uh, we haven't set what those penalties are, but, uh, we do list criminal complaint. Uh, whoever violates any of the provisions of the articles may be penalized by indictment or any complaint brought to the district court. Uh, fees to be set. Non-criminal disposition, whoever violates any provision of this article may be penalized by a first verbal warning along with public education. Second, by non-criminal disposition as provided in MGL C40, Subsection 21D, and may be punished by non-criminal fines as approved by the town council. Uh, and then, you know, as we move further through this process, we'll set, uh, and review, uh, what the education is, what the warnings are, what the fines are.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, um, a public hearing at 6:45 for the fiscal '25 municipal budget. I'm going to, before I open the public hearing, I'm going to have Brad give an overview of the budget process as well as the budget that he will be presenting tonight.
Um, sure, I'll start with the process. It started off with Bob Reed sending a memo out to, uh, Bob Reed was the former interim town manager, for those who don't know him. Um, I forget, he started in October?
What's that?
October, November? November? And, um, he sent a memo out to all of the department heads, um, I believe in early, actually late December, early January, um, kind of outlining what the budget's process would look like. So from there, um, our town accountant had met with all the individual department heads who put spreadsheets forward, which you guys have as backup in your packet. Um, then they went through various channels of review between Bob, Gabriella, the department head, then Bob, Gabriella and myself, and then a budget subcommittee, um, consisting of, uh, Counselor Barbara Berry, Counselor Jessica Sizer and Counselor Mark Kochi, um, met with individual departments and then Gabriella and myself and went through line by line, every budget line item, um, that were, that was proposed. So from there, we'll take it from what our overall general fund budget request is for FY '25 and that is $41,978,324. And again, that's just the general fund budget. I'd like to personally thank the budget subcommittee, uh, former interim town manager Bob Reed, town accountant Gabriella Potter, uh, for all their hours and discussion that went into developing the budget. The highlights for FY '25 revenue, property taxes and state aid are projected stable. However, we have seen a significant increase in new growth. This is a trend we expect to, uh, see continue as we look forward to ensure our inspections are up to date. The two main drivers for local receipts increases were investment income and income from cannabis excise tax, which is a new, um, tax fund that we're starting to receive. Local receipts do fluctuate from year to year, but as we go into FY '25, one of my goals will be for all departments to review fee structures to ensure that we're in, um, the market rate of really what the, the going rate is locally. FY '25 expenses in general, um, as you go through the budget departmental pages, you notice some significant variances between fiscal years. This was caused by transfers from one budget line to another. So a prime example is Congress Middle School used to sit in a town manager line per se and that got removed and now has its own Congress Middle School budget. So it may look like the town manager's budget was inflated before and now it's dropping, but it's just a transfer of overall, um, expenses between the lines. Um, one great news piece is there's, we're, we're going to be signing a new electric agreement, um, that'll be signed to reduce our electric supply rates by 32% starting in November. We only took into account 8% in our budget based on it only being the supply rate, which is about half of our- We only took into account eight percent in our budget, based on it only being the supply rate, which is about half of our bills. As you guys know, when you see your, your bills, there's a, there's a, a supply and a delivery cost. We are only seeing the decrease on the supply amount. So again, when you back out, that it's only half of your savings, and it's only representative of fifty percent of the bill, we use eight percent as the reduction. HMO and PPO health insurance plans were renewed for a five percent reduction for FY twenty-five. It's not too often that you see health insurance go down, so again, another positive trend. Salary adjustments were made to department heads based on a compensation study, local market analysis, and comparable town salary information. The Palmer Public Schools had a three-point-five percent budget increase, which includes the expansion to no cost full-day pre-K, development expansion of collaborative teaching models, and the transportation contractual increase. In central purchasing, we had an increase in fuel costs based on an FY twenty-five shortfall, so just a usage change. For information technology, we're requesting twenty-five thousand, which was added for department head. We'd looked to hire the department head in the last quarter, so for the last three months of fiscal year twenty-five. And the goal is to really do an analysis on our current contracted services model and see if it makes sense to really look at restructuring how we, we deliver our IT services. The veterans agent, we increased the position from twenty-eight hours to thirty-seven and a half hours, and this is to foster program expansion, such as monthly social meetings for our veterans. The assessors office, we increased the department head work hours to thirty-seven and a half weekly, again, again, matching other department heads. The animal control officer, we fully capture true costs of running the facility and program, which we bill back to each municipality. As you guys remember, there's, I believe, four people, four towns in the regional agreement. Facilities, we added a full-time position, and we included thirty thousand dollars to cover all general maintenance expenses. In the past, we've been very reactive when it comes to our facility maintenance programs. This is kind of a proactive approach. And it, it will, the goal is to create a preventive maintenance capital plan, excuse me, a preventive maintenance plan, a capital plan, and they'll take over day-to-day oversight of our buildings. I think of the police chief right now as kind of trying to manage really the department of day-to-day operations plus facilities, and it's not a good fit. So this would pull out that, for example, and they put it on the facilities director. And the key of that too is, as you guys know, the better off we are with preventive maintenance, the less capital cost we have down the line. It's just another win-win. In the reserve funds, there's three positions in the reserve fund. So we currently requesting ninety-one thousand set aside for the following. The assessing department, we're looking for a part-time data lister. There was a memo from the assessor attached. And the goal of that would be to just ensure we're capturing all of our new growth and really capturing some changes that have gone on with properties that we may have missed down the line. And again, it's revenue that comes back to the town, so it's a position that, actually, even though we outlay a little bit of an expense, we're gonna bring in back the dollar amount plus sum for, for revenue that can be used by all budgets. Same thing for the building inspector. We're requesting a part-time local building inspector. Memo was attached. And again, this is another one that, as we go through, look at a couple of different things, but the key one for this position would be to help our multifamily units, make sure they go through an inspection process every three years to ensure compliance and everything's up to code and standard. And the last one is for the health agent. We're requesting, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollars. And this will fund either, right now, a part-time on-call position or a contracted service. Our health agent was kind of weighing the pros and cons of both, and really, this is something that a lot of our inspections have, were past twenty-twenty-one, so it's trying and getting up to speed. And really, what we have for, outlined for bylaws and ordinances and really our standards to get those back up to speed. In other expenses, you saw a slight increase to all our other expenses, including stabilization accounts, which I plan to memorialize in the future when we go through our financial policies. In wastewater, inflation to general operating expenses in addition to growing capital project expenses have the recommended budget totaling four million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. After reducing anticipated offsets of eight hundred twenty-two thousand, which is Munson, Septage, and miscellaneous revenue, the balance left to cover is three million, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. If we assume a ninety-eight percent collection rate, based on the trend history of what we've collected in the past, we would need to bill out three million, seven hundred one thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. And what that equates to with five thousand, one hundred forty-one EDUs being billed, it would set the FY twenty-five rate to seven hundred twenty dollars per EDU, which is up from six hundred fourteen, that's an FY twenty-four. For capital, a five-year capital plan is under development. At this time, we are requesting the two million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars of free cash be transferred to the capital stabilization account. This just gives us more time to develop that plan. When I started back in April, I reviewed the, what we had on paper, and it was only really a good one-year plan. We really want a good five to eventually maybe a ten-year outlook. And with the two-point-one million, we're assuming that the five hundred thousand dollars would roll over in free cash. Again, that'll be part of our financial policies memorialized as we go forward, but again, that's just good budget sense to, to roll over some free cash. And the last one is, just to close out on the capital, is that obviously, if anything urgent comes up that needs to be purchased right away, we'd bring that forward to you guys to approve. We won't set on that till we have a full capital plan. And in conclusion, this budget has gone through multiple checks and balances between department head reviews and budget subcommittee meetings. I am confident saying that this budget moves Palmer forward in the right direction of aligning all of our core services with appropriate funding. As we move forward, it'll be important for the town to make continued efforts on finding new revenue streams and maximizing grant opportunities. Again, to save the taxpayers as much as we can and continue to provide positive services for everyone in the town Palmer.
Thank you. That was excellent.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing at seven oh eight. Ask the council if you have any questions, especially Carl and Phil, who are not on the budget subcommittee.
I haven't really sat and gone through it.
Okay, that's okay, okay.
Yeah, I got, you went over overseeing, doing maintenance programs and different things.
For the facilities director?
Yeah, who's gonna oversee if it's being done or not?
So that position will port to me.
Okay, do you, are you gonna plan on going out to check on everything and, you know, not just do it from here, go see what's going on?
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. No, that's the goal, and that, that really, that position's, a lot of it will be contracted work, because a lot of it, they're not gonna be able to do themselves, so they'll be the ones actually monitoring the contractor.
Yeah, because I know they all work hard, but just overseeing is a material thing.
Exactly, no.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, and with all the capital projects we have coming up, it's gonna be a very vital position.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments from the public or questions?
All I heard was the school department.
You need to, you need to.
Do I have to really go?
Yeah, because if you were watching from home, no one can hear you.
Sandy Moon in King Street in Palmer. The only increase I heard was for the school department. Are we gonna get the increases for all the other departments? You mentioned the schools up three-point-five percent. That's the only department I heard.
Yeah, we can, we can go through them.
You go through each department and tell us what the increases are?
If the board wants that, they can, but.
I mean, why would you just mention the schools?
I thought that was a fair assessment. I Pathfinder, I'll get Pathfinder too if you want me to enter another school.
I want to know the public DPW. I want to know the police department. I want to know every department in town what the increases are. See, I didn't know those were over there.
They're available online too.
And they're online, yes.
Can we talk about those?
So the town council, I'll go one by one. Town council budget was up forty-one point seven percent. And again, before everyone says it's forty-one point seven percent, it's only a thirty-five-hundred-dollar increase that was moved from a line item. The town manager budget is up thirteen point nine percent. The reserve fund is up a hundred percent because there was no money allocated prior year. Central purchasing is up thirteen percent. Legal counsel is up zero percent. That's a level service. Computer maintenance, the IT, technology and support is up twenty-six point five percent. And again, that's because the added twenty-five thousand for the salary. The town clerk is up three-point-seven. Elections registration is up eight-point-nine. Conservation commission is up six-point-two. Planning is down by eight-point-seven. Facilities is brand-new. It's a hundred percent increase. Regional, regional animal control is up forty-two point one. Again, that gets billed out to other towns. The administration building is up twenty percent. Memorial Hall is up sixty-four point seven, and again, that's the Memorial Hall, Council on Aging, building expense. The Congress Middle School is down twenty-one point four. Town reports got moved, so that line item shows as minus a hundred percent, but again, that's got shuffled to another budget. Building inspector is down five-point-seven percent. The board of health is up thirteen point four. The council on aging is up sixteen point five. Veterans agent is four-point-seven. Recreation is two-point-three. The town accountant is up four-point-nine. The assessors is up seven. The treasurer is up thirty-one point six. The collector is down ten. The police are up nine-point-nine. The police station is up ten-point-eight. Emergency management is up eleven. The regional animal control operating is up thirty-seven point three. The DPW is up four-point-seven. Palmer Public Schools, three-point-five. Pathfinder Vape, one-point-one. Palmer Public Library, two-point-six. And that is it. And again, just so everyone.
A lot of these due to wage increases.
A piece of it, but this is what you gotta remember.
I guess since we're going through Palmer Public Library went up two-point-six, what's the, is that?
What page number?
Looks like it's salary. You had just gone by it, six.
Salaries and then.
It looks like salaries.
Yeah, and again, remember, a lot of these variances are caused by transfers from one line to another. So that's why some show as forty percent, and also, some of these budgets are under fifty thousand, and when you transfer five grand into it, it automatically shows as a large percentage increase.
Can I speak about the sewer department now?
Yep.
Now, the EDUs, can you explain the EDUs?
I'd ask Matt or Kenny to jump in and talk about the EDUs.
Andy, my name's Kenny Lord Superintendent. An EDU is seventy-three thousand gallons.
Okay, I'm thinking, I'm thinking a toilet is an EDU.
A single-family home gets charged one EDU. Do cost of living, charge two. Then the bigger companies in town, they get based on water usage by themselves. Then we divide it by seventy-three thousand and come up with their total number of EDUs.
Okay, and I, I heard something there, you mentioned something about EDUs, but also, something was gonna go from six, six hundred ninety dollars to seven hundred sixty?
So the jumper EDU.
Ten to seven twenty.
So is that saying, a, a, a single-family house is gonna go up over a hundred dollars? Is that what you're saying?
A year, one-ten.
Going up a hundred?
Ten, hundred and ten.
Sewer fees are gonna set, catching up to the property taxes for some of these homes. Do you realize that?
I think we. We understand that, Steve, but at the same time, we're also trying to balance out all of our capital needs for the plan itself. And I can't say, I can't go back in time and say what the discussion points were, but for a long time, that rate was flat. And that's now put us behind, and now we're trying to play catch-up over the next fifteen, twenty years to really build a capital, to have the capital money to invest in the infrastructure. So there's been a lot of good years where that was flat-lined. Kenny or Matt, it was five hundred, ten dollars, I think, for a solid stretch.
Six to eight years it went up. If it didn't go up, it went up like five dollars.
And that's, now we're paying for that. Now, it's, it's all caught up to us.
Eight years sewer rates are online on the website.
I think, I can speak for the, I think I speak for the council, and this is, we, no one wants to raise taxes. No one wants to repay sewer fees, but with the infrastructure behind it, we don't have the capital, if something catastrophic comes up, to handle for reserve funds. So this, not only one helps build up the reserve a little bit to an adequate place, it also addresses the long-term capital needs that are coming down the line.
See, any, any fee that's going to the government is a tax, no matter how you, how you spit it out there, it's a tax.
But without raising the fees, we wouldn't have money to cover the capital infrastructure.
I just said, everything's going up all at once. You know, the food and everything else, and so these people just aren't gonna be able to afford it.
No, I get it. I, I always, I always comp anything we do in government.
Not only the residential businesses too.
I get it, I get it, but that's, this is part of the problem of where we are now. You think of Comcast. Everyone here probably has Comcast. Comcast goes up every year by a percentage.
I know, but you have a choice. You don't have to.
Agree.
This, this year, you have no choice. So, how's your roof coming?
The lease is underway. Most of the leases stopped.
I see all the outbuildings getting worked on right here.
Top on it or, or what? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, folding is this fall. Change it. Folding is this fall. Get them out.
Ruth, come on up.
Literally has nothing to do.
Again, my name is Ruth Curtin. I live on River Street in Thorndike. I have a question for the gentleman who's in charge of the DPW. It's come to my attention that local septic companies empty into our sewer plant. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, how me as a citizen could find out what the revenue is from those companies that are dumping into our sewer plant? Is there a way that we can find out what the revenue might be, sir?
Yeah, it's actually posted. We charge right now, we charge all septic colors, I believe it's about ten and a half, ten and a half cents per gallon.
And where is that posted?
Revenue, and that's actually included in our budget. There's special revenue coming in.
Okay, so there's a way. So there's a way that a private citizen could find out what the revenue is per year from that?
Yes, and actually, our, our EDU schedule already subtracts that. So we get a charge, we charge Munson for usage, we charge Septage. And then when we take that revenue, we take it off the top and then calculate our EDU.
So how would a citizen find that?
You can, you can reach out to, yeah, reach out, reach out to the town manager tomorrow and they can get you that information.
Okay, thank you. A lot of people would like to know. Thank you very much.
Sandy?
I guess I'm just wondering, and I hate pitting department against department. I'm also on the, the library board of directors. We had a very hard time. Can't meet operating expenses because of a two-point-six percent. Can you explain the nine-point-nine percent of the police department, please? And this is nothing against the police department. I just think we deserve an explanation of how it goes up that much.
I know one thing we added back in while, while Mr. Brothers looks up that information. This year, we added cruisers, them purchasing cruisers back into their operating budget, which was separate last year, or actually, for the past, what?
Two, probably two.
Two, three years, where we would buy that out of.
Free cash.
Free cash, and we're now making them pay for that themselves. So that's a percentage increase. That's what, a hundred?
Well, it just makes sense to add in a recurring cost into the operating budget instead of using free cash to purchase it because free cash.
It did, so that was, that was taken out by the previous manager. We had worked very hard to build that into the budget because it is operating capital. We need to buy cruisers, two cruisers every single year. And so that was, that was our, one of our priorities this year, is to, again, we're trying to live within our means and knowing that it's no different than computers. If you have to replace a computer every five years, then you need to budget for that. So Mark is absolutely right. That is the bulk of that increase, is, it was a hundred and something thousand. I just need to find that sheet.
It's a hundred thirty-five.
So I, I, I would just say this, reading percentage. Reading percentages does you absolutely no good. You literally have to look at each of the budgets and look at what that increase is. Because as Brad said, you know, some of those budgets, it looks like a large increase, but it's a, you know, a large percentage increase on a very small budget. A lot of the stuff that we did this year was recommended by, um, both the town manager and the, uh, town accountant to move money from different areas of the budget that made more sense to them. So you see budgets going down and then others going up what seems like a lot of money, but it's just reallocation of the funds. Um, you know, uh, Brad highlighted all the additional things that were added into the budget. I'll tell you, the police chief, uh, put in for a dispatcher and a police officer. Neither one of those things were funded. So, um, you know, again, you know, looking at, looking at the percentage without looking at the dollars, which I think is on that piece of paper, I think you can see what the actual increase was. Um, and we did need to make some adjustments to, um, some of our employees because we are not make, we are not paying market value for our employees and we cannot, uh, and I'm sure the school is having the same issue, but, um, you know, we are trying to retain our employees and not lose them to other towns. Um, you know, as, as everyone knows, the majority of the money that the town spends on their budget every year is people. And so we are doing what we can to keep the people that we have because they are an asset and they are valuable to this community and we don't wanna lose them to other communities, so, um, but, but-
This is the first year that the cruisers were added back into the budget?
They've been out for, I believe, two, two years.
The percent increase last year was also quite large, and I wanna say it was similar.
If you take the cruisers out this fiscal year, it ends up being a five percent increase. And the drivers on that are contractual obligations, um, just for, uh, general increases, plus that then impacts the, um, overtime costs. Um, but the other piece to this too is with the new, um, I can draw on the blink on the name of it right now, but the, uh-
Post?
Post, yes, thank you. The Post program, there's guidelines and rules and essentially their own policy manual that the police have to adopt. And that now has a training component to it that we're now catching up and having to pay for.
But every, every department has contractual obligations, like the library, like the schools. And then, when you don't get that kind of an increase like the police got, we don't move forward with some of the proposals. Um, and in some cases, can't even meet operating expenses because of contractual obligations.
No, but I'm just saying as a comparable, I'm sure your contractual increases were above your three point five percent. If you look at, if you just pull those out individually.
That they were above?
Yeah, they, they, they-
Well, again, you talk about bringing, you talk about bringing expenses up, salaries up, so people don't leave. And that's been the case with the library for years. They're severely underpaid. So you do that to bring people up so you don't lose them. So, I mean, it happens in every department, but we don't see the same level of increase in each department.
I also think, wasn't there a discussion with the library on trying to consolidate some services that was turned down? We tried to avoid- Save costs and save-
I, I don't know why we're picking on the police department budget, but the police department budget went up two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, of which a hundred and thirty-five thousand are those cruisers. That's not a large increase.
I'm not trying to pick on, I'm just trying to understand while some departments get the increases that they get and other departments do not get those kind of increases.
We are trying to maintain services. We did not add staffing. We, we did not add staffing to this budget. But I'm just saying, you can't look at the percentage increase because this percentage increase for the police budget is skewed based on the fact that the hundred and thirty-five thousand was not, it was zero last year. So, again, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand minus a hundred and thirty-five thousand is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollar increase for this budget.
And it's not that that money wasn't spent last year, it was in a different way.
Right, it was, it was, right, but it was zero last year, so. Um, but again, you know, I mean, Brad, uh, met with the library. Um, they, the, I thought that the, uh, the justification for what that budget was made sense. Uh, I know the, um, some, the, the, a member of the trustees did reach out and had a conversation with Brad. They had an opportunity to come and talk again. I did not hear anything back from the email that I received.
There was, there was a response that members couldn't, couldn't attend. Um, there, there was one meeting on a Wednesday night and a number of us could not attend. So we asked if there was another time, but you were wrapping it, wrapping up the budget.
I sent it, but I sent a response back to that individual. I can't remember who it was that, what the name was of the person that reached out to me. Told her that we had not finished up, that these were, that all the information that we received, thought they, the information that we received appeared logical as to what the library was doing and the recommendation of what the town manager was doing. Um, he then spoke to that individual or via email, and I did invite them to come back to, to the next meeting if they wanted to. But it was, the response that I got back, that I saw was they were gonna talk amongst themselves and if they wanted to come back, they would. I will say this also. This was a very difficult budget season, and I'll tell you why. Because we had an interim town manager who, when he presented a budget to the town council, the budget was out of balance. A lot of promises were made to people by the prior town, town manager, by the interim town manager as to where the budget would progress moving forward. And then Brad came in on April first and we had a very short opportunity to try to figure things out. I know that the superintendent wanted to come in and talk to us again. We were literally trying to balance this budget two weeks ago because, again, it was out of balance. And I think that we did a very good job in trying with the money that we have to keep the, the services that the town has moving forward. Um, the positions that we, we added, uh, I think are absolutely necessary to generate more money so that we have more money going forward. I mean, everyone complains about the, what the town looks like, uh, buildings are falling apart. The only way you solve those problems is you have to spend money to fix those things. So I think the facilities, um, person that we are looking, and Brad still has to put a job description together. We need to make decisions as to what that position's gonna look at when we set the money aside. Because going forward, funding that position is absolutely gonna save us money down the road. Um, we are reactive on everything. We do not take care of things. We wait till they're in disrepair and then we fix it. And it doesn't matter what, we can fill in the blank with any building or any park or anything else that you want to. So I think that that's a step in the right direction. And as far as the, the other two positions which I wholeheartedly support is, you know, we have a brand new, came forward with a, with a, uh, you know, asking if we could go out to bid for a different way to, um, look at personal property. That's already paid off. She's only been here, how long? Six months? Eight months, eight months, that's already generating new growth. Um, we are spending money on, um, an outside consultant that is only able to do a certain number of inspections every day and it's very costly, or every year. Um, she is proposing hiring somebody in-house. It will end up saving us money and will allow that person to go out on more inspections. Uh, a lot of people do things without permits. If you could get somebody out there that goes around, yes, nobody wants to pay taxes. But the bottom line is the only thing that helps you as far as tax rates is to pick up if someone puts a deck on without a permit or someone puts a pool in without a permit. All those type of things will be able to be picked up with that position. The, you know, the assess, the principal assessor and the building inspector are kinda collaborating together to come up with a position that is not only good for the assessor, but also will work on the building, the building side of the house because those two, it's very important that those two positions talk to each other. So as, as permits are being taken out, and then on the assessing side, they're taking and picking up those permits and putting them into tax dollars. So, again, spending money that hopefully, will it happen next year? I don't know, but I think every month that goes by, the position will pay for itself in the end. And, you know, one of the other things is unfortunately, on the town side, um, we do not have enough staff to keep up with the responsibilities of some of the departments. And I think we're making a really good plan to do that. And every department needs more money. We know that. Uh, you know, I am concerned about, you know, I think the budget that, that's being presented is a good budget, but I will say this. I think that next year, there's gonna be a lot of issues because, one, they got a decrease in health insurance. Is that gonna happen again next year? Probably not. Pathfinder was one point one percent. Is that gonna happen again next year? I don't know. School department is getting off of the Esser spending, but you're pre-buying a lot of stuff this year with your Esser money. Do I have concerns about what that's? I know the superintendent has a plan and that's great. That's what he gets paid for. But all of these things are potential issues next year. So I think that this was a tough budget year. I think next year is gonna be worse. Unfortunately, our state aid is not growing at the level that it should and our local receipts are flat, in my opinion. Um, you know, town manager has addressed that, you know, in the upcoming year, he, or months, he's going to work with his department heads to try to look at those. Again, nobody wants to pay more for things, but, um, and I understand, you know, what everyone's saying about, you know, everything is going up. And unfortunately, things go up in our personal lives and, and I get it. And things are going up on, you know, in the municipal world too. And the sewer department is a really good example of that because what the costs were to run that sewer department, pre-COVID to post-COVID, are sometimes two, three, four times more than that, what they were, uh, pre-COVID. So we're, we're feeling it all around and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of things have been ignored and a lot of this is now gonna fall on the new town manager to really hit the ground running and get all this stuff back under control. So, um, like I said, I think we all have to work together. Um, and with the exception of the things that I just highlighted, everything else is basically flat budgets. Uh, you know, no new services, no new anything.
Sadly, minimal increases too.
And they are minimal, but-
Minimal increases.
Thank you.
Just one question. I don't think I heard anything about the park department.
That's DPW.
That's in DPW?
Yep. Anybody else? Did I close the public hearing or?
Uh, Tina's coming up.
You got one?
Yeah.
Tina Broman. I am a homeowner in Palmer and I'm also the Veteran Service Officer in town. Um, I wanted to come up here just to speak on, uh, two different things. I work in the town. I've just gone through my second budget year. Last year, I didn't really do anything because I was brand new, had no idea what I was doing. I will say that I'm a very blunt person. Brad knows me very well now. Um, I have scrutinized, I have asked questions, I have gotten down and dirty about the process. And I will say that there's good and bad in everything. But the budget, the three people in the budget committee and Brad have literally gone line by line, item by item, like just went through these budgets. Made sure that they're not overspending, made sure that they're adding where they need to. Not everybody's gonna be happy. Um, was I happy, completely a hundred percent happy? Absolutely not. Nobody's going to be. But like we said, and it's been reiterated, everything's going up in our life. Every single thing is going up. So that's the same thing with the town. The town is, everything's going up. All of our stuff that we, um, budgeted for last year. For example, I'm, um, responsible for flags. I have to reorder flags. I had to order five wreaths for Memorial Day for the different memorials. Literally went up two hundred dollars. That's insane, but that is reality, unfortunately. So as a, a homeowner in Palmer, I enjoy working for Palmer in my town. Like, I could've gone out and made almost double the amount. They know this. I won't. It's a bigger community. I enjoy my community. I enjoy working here. Um, I love Palmer. So, um, so as a homeowner, I know, I don't even, honestly, might be ignorant, but I don't even look at my taxes. I don't. Because I know what the tax money's going towards. It's going, well, I know what my taxes are, I'm not stupid. But I'm not questioning because I know that every single penny goes to something that means something. You know, whether it's for salaries, I've seen people drop like flies around here because of the salary. Not because they don't wanna work here. Everybody loves working here. There isn't one person that does not like working here. But they can only do what they can do. And I've only come to a few meetings and all it is, is complaining. I can complain about things, absolutely. But I just wanted to come up here as not only a department head and not because of raises or not because of what I got for a budget because I can, you know, we can say a lot. But as a taxpayer here and as an employee, I just wanna thank you all for doing your due diligence to make sure that the town is getting what they need, to make sure you're being proactive and not reactive because that's been, um, a theme since I've been coming to the, um, the meetings and that's what you've talked about doing. So I wanna thank you for doing that and, um, being open. And Brad has only been here two months, but he has a lot of good ideas. So we have to give him a chance too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Next item on the agenda is Lemonade Day proclamation.
Something positive.
Would you like to sit down? Okay. Um, so, we're just saying, this should be pretty quick. Um, so, uh, what we're doing, um, with the Recreation Department, Julia had approached us about doing a, a National Lemonade Day, uh, program, which Lemonade Day is a, it's a national, now international, organization. Um, they have basically curriculum that, that works to teach, uh, teach youth business principles, you know, essentially through running a lemonade stand. But they learn money management. Uh, the bank has run, run some classes with that. Uh, they learn, you know, they work with local businesses. Um, business owners can act as mentors towards the kids to just teach them how to, you know, how to run a business, how to have business sense. And then on a set date, in, in this case, uh, August twenty-fourth, uh, we, the kids will run lemonade stands. We will advertise where they are and get the community out there supporting the kids. Uh, then we'll have an event for them. Uh, so we're, basically, we're asking for a, um, an official proclamation of this day for a couple of reasons. One, because we wanna make sure that it is known that this is a, an important thing to, you know, to help the youth and to help them understand business, business practices in a, in a real-world environment, not just a classroom setting. Um, but also, we do wanna make sure that it, you know, there's also an understanding that, you know, the, this is a, a special day, not a, uh, you know, not everybody can do this kind of thing all the time. We have, uh, we have already gone to the Board of Health uh, because obviously anytime you're serving any sort of food or drink or anything, there's, there's safety requirements, as I'm sure a lot of you know. Uh, so we've worked with them to what, to, to kind of establish what they're okay with. So the kids will all receive permission. Uh, we will be doing inspections day of just to make sure they're following the rules. Uh, so again, all things you do for businesses, getting your business permits, all that kind of stuff. So, uh, that's basically, it's basically what Lemonade Day is, what we're trying to do. And, uh, basically, the classes, it's, it's about eight weeks of, of, uh, of different classes through the, uh, through the bank, through Lemonade Day themselves, as well as a couple of building workshops for the kids to build their lemonade stands if they choose to build them through a workshop or they could build them at home with their parents if their parents have that, uh, inclination to, to do that kind of work.
Is there an age limit?
Um, generally five to eighteen. Just, is, the child needs to be able to understand money management, so.
You can feel free to, uh, to be a mentor for some kids, though.
Okay.
Are you working in conjunction with the school?
We, yeah, we will be. So once we get this kind of official, we wanna make sure it's all locked in and official before we start sending out stuff. Uh, but then in the next, in the next day or two, we're gonna be getting the flyers out to the school. We are limiting, uh, for year one, we are limiting it to twenty-five lemonade stands.
Not twenty-five children, just?
Yeah, so if, say like, say like the scouts wanna have a lemonade stand and there's twelve people there, those twelve people can work together to have one stand. They don't have to have twelve separate ones. Uh, we are also gonna have some, figuring out some concessions for kids who might live at the end of a dead-end street versus kids who live right on Main Street. Perhaps looking at some of our park space. Uh, as you know, we have a lot of great parks in town, so, you know, basically like an application basis, if a kid lives at the end of a dead-end street, we'll try to find them an appropriate place where they can get some foot traffic.
In front of businesses, um, limiting the stands so it is a successful event. What we don't want to have happen is the child puts forth all this work and effort and then fails at making enough of a, you know. So we're hoping that we can offset that by having a limit on the stands this year.
Any questions?
I just.
Maybe I missed it. Where do the funds go?
So the, so all of the money that the kids raise, they keep.
It's not going to lower your taxes.
Kind of what I was just.
The bank, um, the bank and.
That's year two.
International, um, have a, um, spend, save, share motto. So the children will learn to spend, save some, and then also hopefully put back into the community through organizations, nonprofits, things that they like. Um, you know, animal shelters, food banks, it just depends on the child. So.
Right. Which is, which is also something that they can, you know, kind of use for marketing it to some extent. They could say, hey, we, you know, we're supporting this cancer organization because they helped whatever relative and, you know, somebody might say, hey, I support that organization too. I'm going to go to your lemonade stand, you know.
Can you give them that recommendation to make me look at?
Yeah. So they'll receive, they'll receive the recommend, the, the recommendation that they'll be given is, is that, is that, um, spend, share, save. That's the, that's what the curriculum that the bank will be teaching them and what Lemonade Day also teaches.
It all gets together really well. It teaches the child how to manage money and also customer service, working together, networking, everything you would want to give a child. And it's an open range, kindergarten to 18. We're hoping to maybe, you know, move this in years forward, but at least for this year, we're just doing it to base and trying to move from there.
Al- also that we are, we will be looking at businesses to be helping to contribute.
Mentors.
You know, to, you know, mentors, uh, helping, I, I know we've got like some materials for the lemonade stands donated. Uh, so we're not, you know, we're not using.
It's not a big class event. It's just base, it's pretty much just all the adults and the community in entirety coming together. The business is, you can walk down your street on Lemonade Day. You can choose to support a child. You can mentor a child. There are so many, every single member of this community can come forth on Lemonade Day or even before and be a part of this. And it's not something that everything, not every organization's able to do that. And this is just one small way. We can do it and we're helping the kids and it's just, it's amazing.
And on, on our end, we're incredibly lucky to have Julia. She has run this in other areas. So she is familiar with the program, the curriculum. It made it very easy when she, you know, when she approached me and this year to be able to say, yeah, we can probably do this right away.
Yeah.
We don't have, she was like looking next year, the year after as potential and it was, I was like, well.
It's been awesome so far. I'm super excited because it is so awesome.
Pretty happy to help.
How they, you know, it says that they, they, they learn how to create a budget, set profit, make goals, serve customers, repay, repay investors, give back to communities. And then down here is what happens to money raised. It's a hundred percent of what they make is their business profit. Uh, that can't be true.
Well, what do you mean?
If you're teaching them.
Well, you, well, some.
I'm just saying your flyer is, it's a little.
You have to understand though, some investors or mentors just give the child the money. So say I'm an investor and I'm investing in a stand. I'm going to give the child $200. Okay. That's for the stand. That's for the supplies. So I.
So that's a donation. That's not invested.
Yes. Well.
If you're investing, you're expecting.
Money back.
Back. I was just saying, if we're going to teach, let's teach.
You're invested in the future of time.
We are also just, I, we're not, we're, when I'm venting the will, um, we are just following what they've been doing since 2007. So if there's modifications or adjustments that you like to base, like, you know, then that's something we can address. But we're, I'm not re-venting. We're just redoing something that's been proven to be done successfully.
And I will say what, what you have in front of you is directly off of the website. So lemonade day.org. Feel free to go there and look into it as well. Uh, so.
I did.
This is, this is straight off of their website. I didn't want to rewrite things and.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Accurate.
Just saying, you know, what they're saying is.
Maybe their wording isn't completely accurate, but, um.
I mean, I'd love to see, uh, entrepreneur day instead of just plain lemonade, you know.
Well, maybe we can move to that.
Yeah. So all that.
You gotta call it something.
So in Plymouth, we had a, a children's business fair and it was associated with the schools. And it was one of the best days. Uh, you, you got assigned, we worked with local banks. We have at least two in town that would probably want to partner with us, that you go through a whole curriculum, you match up students, business folks in the town, and they really mentor them. And then it was always right before Christmas and we had kids rolling out of the, the fair with a couple hundred dollars each. Um, so again, it's just good. It's, hopefully this is a building block to bigger things.
I mean, and, you know, we can say that children can sell non-perishable items along with their state. I mean.
Yeah. So what the.
We're open to ideas. We're just looking for the support.
You guys, this is, you're, we're step one. We're going to grow bigger, but this is step one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So with the, with the, just so you guys know, what the board of health had approved was prepackaged snacks, store bought, prepackaged. So, uh, and then the lemonade is going to be, it's got to be basically powdered mix and bottled water.
Yep.
Because we're, they're not going to be.
They're already learning about, uh.
They're going to learn everything.
Restrictions and.
Exactly.
Serving appropriately. Pretty much we're trying to teach.
Yeah. You can't serve them like this.
In a fun way.
Yeah. And we, and we'll have a session with that as well with the board of health as well. So they understand that side of it too.
Okay. Um, so we have a proclamation that Mark.
All right. Proclamation, August 24, 2024, as Lemonade Day Palmer. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free community-wide educational event, providing children with the opportunity to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking and create a foundation for success in the global economy. And whereas Lemonade Day exists to infuse today's youth, youth with a spirit of enterprise, teaching the basic business and entrepreneurial skills necessary to become successful contributing members of their communities. And whereas Lemonade Day has a core philosophy of spend, save and share that is implemented by teaching children how to start, own and operate a business. Learn global setting, develop a business plan, establish a buzz, a budget, seek investors, provide customer service and give back to the community. And whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, institutes of higher learning and government agencies to unite for a common purpose to train the next generation of entrepreneurs. Whereas Lemonade Day is an event that demonstrates to young people of the town of Palmer and surrounding communities that they are important and citizens care about their future. And whereas the town of Palmer salutes and commends organizers, volunteers and participants of Lemonade Day, a program that advances life skills, character and entrepreneurship and extends best wishes for success and rewarding observance. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Palmer hereby proclaims August 24th, 2024 as Lemonade Day Palmer and encourages all residents of the Palmer area and surrounding communities to participate and have a role either by selling or buying lemonade. Signed this day, June 10, 2024.
I do have a motion to support and sign the proclamation. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Well, good luck.
Thank you so much.
If you're going to get flyers off to the schools, you have to score as one student as a half day.
Yep. Going out tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Valerie Wadika to the Board of Registars with a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Motion by Jessica, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the appointment of David Pasquini to the ZBA with a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Jessica, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is resolution 2024 12, which is an ARPA request for the Legion Field concession and restrooms of $13,786. Do you want to talk about that one?
So if the board remembers, uh, the council remembers, last time we, uh, pulled this from the agenda, after looking at the building's assessed value, um, it met, if we made the original adjustments we proposed, there would be ADA requirements. So instead we went back to the drawing board, we're proposing to make the actual restrooms compliant for ADA now, um, which makes a lot of sense long-term. If we want to look at making the, the two playgrounds right at Legion Field ADA fully accessible, we have a full ADA restroom that's approved right next to it. So it's a good long-term plan.
Makes sense. Any questions?
I have a question, not related, well, kinda. What, what would be the timing, like a couple of weeks?
Uh, if it was approved, I'd just only get, roll it right out of it tomorrow.
And then it's like, what, a couple of week process?
Yeah. I mean, a couple of different contractors fitting the following schedules. So I'd probably stay by there until somewhere for sure.
Just curious.
Do a motion to approve $13,786 from the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Second.
By Carl, second by Jess. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is resolution 2024 15, which is to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 38A, collection of accounts due city and town powers and duties of tax collectors. So what acceptance of this section of Mass General Law will change the name of the tax collector to town collector. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Jessica, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is resolution 2024 16 with, 2024 16, which is a funding the snow and ice deficit for fiscal '24. It's a transfer of, let's see, $29,547.30, I'm sorry, $29,547.39 from free cash. Do I have a motion? Motion by Carl, second by Jessica. All in favor?
A question?
Yeah. Look on, what, opposed? Yeah.
Now, we had a bunch of variable snow, variable ice. Did we not fund it enough? Because we got hardly any snow this year. I don't understand why there's that deficit.
Because it was, we had a lot of slippery weather. We had a lot of wet weather and actually 29,000 isn't really that much in the grand scheme of what we've had in like years where we do have a lot of snow. But yes, we do not fund the, the snow and ice budget is not funded to the level of what it is. That account is allowed to be deficit spent and whatever you put in, you can never go lower. So because snow removal goes up and down year to year, you don't want to put, if you put a, a lot in it for like a really bad winter, you can never reduce that budget going forward. So you are very welcome.
And a lot of times too, I'll just add on to that, um, we're, storm prep happens a lot. And even though we're, you guys know how it goes. We get, we're projecting six inches and we get nothing, but we still call the guys in. So there's always a cost associated with that. I think they're four hour minimums, I think, right when we call in. So.
I have no complaints about how we take care of the roads or outstanding.
Next is res- resolution 2024 17. Uh, this is a request for the use of ARPA funds in the amount of, this is a second request for the expenses for Palmer Road, $794,206.67.
This is final, right? This is, everything's in?
Yes. Yes. We knew this was going to be a big hitter coming in. Um, this leaves our ARPA balance at right around $600,000 after we take all this into consideration. Again, nothing we anticipated, but at the same time, thankfully we have ARPA to cover this. Otherwise it'd be hit to our general stabilization.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
That was my question. Where, where, you know, because of what our proposed, this is obviously falls into the parameter or whatever, but had we not had this, where and how would we have?
Either free cash.
Let me steal the kids' lemonade money.
Snacks.
And the snacks.
Snacks.
Do you have a question or?
We have to do a.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Next is resolution 2024 18, which is commemorative signage fund. So a $50,000 transfer from free cash. Brad?
So this is a request to approve a $50,000, uh, free cash transfer to a new commemorative signage fund. Uh, this request, we talked about free cash before, but this request prior to the request from the budget would leave 2.7 million in free cash. Um, this fund balance in the commemorative fund, signage fund would roll over year to year. And the background on this is, um, Palmer has many parks, field and bridges throughout the town that were named in memory of an individual or family or event of historical significance. This fund would allow us to properly maintain existing signage in addition to purchasing new plaques, et cetera, to highlight the details in history. Um, generations before and after us will continue to use these amenities and this fund would allow us to ensure the history is properly maintained and passed forward.
Do we have a motion to transfer $50,000 from free cash for that purpose?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by.
Give it to Phil.
Jessica, second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Subcommittee reports, anything?
Nothing outside the budget.
Town manager report?
All right. I've got a few items here. So the library is kicking off, um, with two summer reading campaigns on June 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Um, you can stop in and receive a coupon for a free ice cream, wide open for any ages. So any of us can actually go and get a free ice cream coupon. On June 27th, um, they're also offering a mobile mini golf from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock. And again, both are geared to kick off the summer reading, um, campaign. Uh, the concert series has started at Hernibitz Park that it runs from 6:00 to 8:00 on Thursdays. There's food trucks and a beer garden. Um, an update on the Barker Street land grant. So previously the council approved about 120,000 be spent on acquiring the property. Um, I just want to bring to the board's attention that there's a slight change, um, based on a survey review that brought the property down to 96,000 was the, uh, the value, um, which the seller has agreed to lower from the prior $100,000 agreement. So I just want the board to know, the council to know that even though, um, the value dropped down, we're not paying above the appraised value. So just so everyone's on, on board with that. Um, there's no changes to the intent or the future use. The grant will still reimburse us 70% of every dollar that is expended. So once that project closes out, I'll be requesting to rescind the remaining funds to deposit them back into, I believe the money came from free cash, whatever account it came from, we'll deposit it back into. Any questions on Barker Street? No? All right. Um, planning now has 65% of our permits being issued online. So that's a positive step in the right direction. The town made an investment in a system called Permanise. Um, and again, that's a number we hope to grow up to 90 to 100 within the next year, but 65% for where we are to date is, uh, pretty positive. Um, there is a posting going out for all of our open seats for boards and committees. Um, we have a Facebook plus a post going out, plus a post in the paper. Um, so I'm requesting that anyone who is interested in any of our vacancies, send me an email or mail in a letter of intent that I can give to the council for approval. So if anyone is up for seats, um, please don't, again, I don't know what we've done in the past, but we're trying to clean up this process that you have to submit a letter of intent to me and also give me a little bit of detail about yourself and what your goal is, is for the committee. Um, the election is tomorrow. You can vote between 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. for those who did not do the mail-in ballot. And the one last note I have is the summer food service program at PHS is starting and it's for kids ages four to 18. That is available from, uh, 10:45 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And it's available, um, to, again, all kids ages four to 18. And you receive a hot meal the day of and also a bag lunch for tomorrow. So if you show up on Monday, you're getting a hot meal for Monday and a bag lunch for Tuesday and same thing down the line as you go. Um, and that is a positive program that we hope that most of our, uh, our kids ages four to 18 take advantage of here in Palmer.
Questions for Brad on that? Miss Selene's correspondence?
I've gotten a lot of complaints for the, uh, the food truck down here at Hernibitz Park. Noise complaints. Um, I know we had one that went to all of us, but I had like three more this week. So I don't know what we need to do. I know we don't have a, a food truck.
Yeah. So right now there's no set policy or ordinance in place that prohibits them from setting up anywhere on public property. Um, with that being said, we're working with the vendor who's at Hernibitz to try to find an alternative location for them. Um, that's furthest away from a residential property as you have. Same thing with the porta potties. We're looking to relocate them as well.
I think the, the, the noise issue is the echoing through the.
Generator. Exactly. Yep. Yeah. So we're looking at putting that on, uh, the, one of the corners of Springfield Street. And again, the generator noise would kick to the, I think it's the Mustang bike seat building. And again, it's not a residential. So we're trying to improve it where we can.
So there's no way for us to address like commercial activity happening on public property?
For the food trucks, they got a one-year license. I don't think there's anything that prohibits them from not setting up. And I will say that vendor specifically has been very willing to work with us.
Yeah.
So that's a positive. But doesn't mean someone comes in next and it's not as, exactly. So.
Yeah.
That will go into, I think, uh, building goals with the board. All of our ordinances should be looked at and addressed.
What stops, I'm, I'm just thinking of like, okay, what if every food truck just lines Hernibitz on a day there's no like event there? I just, I don't know.
I just, I don't know. I figured that there would be some way for us to enforce like commercial activity happening on public property, I don't know. But, okay, just a thought.
Yeah, there, I mean, obviously if you're doing something negligent and there's something we can do, but at the same time, right now, we have no ordinance in place that says they can't be set up around a park per se.
I don't want to try to stifle business or anything like that.
No, we're, obviously, we're all pro-business here, just as finding, there's a solution to find that works for everyone.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
Yep.
That's the roundtable?
I just have a general comment, I guess. I'm sure everybody watches the news, reads the news, all that. I don't know if you all read or saw, actually, it was on the Springfield News on what happened to Enfield School District this year. That's pretty public. They had to whack, they cut their budget ridiculously and they lost like 120 staff members. That's kind of the fiscal cliff that we're talking about happening next year in mass. But I'm just saying, like, I think we did a pretty good job. I know it's not what everybody wanted. I know the schools need money. I 100% support adding things that make sense, right? And getting the right help to the right kids, stuff like that. But it's actually kind of scary outside our town, so.
It's not just in Connecticut, it's other places.
Oh, yeah, Massachusetts too. That was the big one that made the news that was like, whoa.
Eagles are coming in, they're kind of, it's going to get worse.
Just my two cents on that.
But I think, and I also, if I can just add to that.
Get rid of them.
But I think the superintendent and the central office staff deserves credit for pretty creative ways of maintaining and not having to cut.
Oh, 100%.
So I mean, that's, that's been pretty impressive.
Brad's been working, Mr. Brothers has been working very closely with Matt on how to figure this out, so it's not a, you know.
The communication on both ends has been wonderful.
Yeah, I would say for the, this is probably the best in the past few years.
Absolutely.
But, no, we can still do better, but.
So thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? Make a motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Carl.